Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 3rd, 2013 city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The process we engage in may not be easy, but may it be for us an opportunity for listening, for mutual respect, for deepening self-knowledge, and for an increased appreciation of all who gather here. May we strive not only to express our own ideas and preferences, but may we open ourselves to the insights and values of one another. Though differences may divide, may the love of our community be the ultimate source for unity. Amen.
Thank you, Michael. A roll call Denise?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Morrow?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponce?
Here.
And Mayor Kennedy?
Here. Announcements Denise?
Actually, I have a couple of them. This Tuesday, so a week from today, on September 10th at 1:30 PM at the Wrigley stage, we're doing a Blanny Wrigley-Shriner plaque presentation. A couple of family members will be there. It's just gonna be a small informal thing. And this was all spearheaded by Councilmember Timothy D. Winslow. So that will be Tuesday at 1:30. Then, I gave you guys all a copy of Heal the Bays' End of the Summer Beach Report. Happy to report that we've done better. The one little line says, "This summer, the historically polluted Avalon Beach has shown improvements for the first time in nine years. Though water quality is far from excellent, all five monitoring locations improved from F grades to the following." So they did an average. We had 1A, 1B, 2Cs, and 1D. And Sean Haggerty, who's with BBNK, we've been in correspondence since that report came out, and he feels positive that they've acknowledged our improvements, which is great, and that every time we've, the few times this summer where we have been posted, it leads us into investigate further why at this beach. And each time, something has revealed itself to us, so that's a good thing for us to learn by. And that we are gonna be meeting in September to set up new plans of how to keep improving what we've already been doing, besides all the sewer repair stuff that's ongoing continuously. Let's see. And then, I just wanted to tell you that on August 20th, when you authorized that necessary roadwork for Pebly Beach Road for $6,642.50, that actually, we got money from a par sac grant, which is a safety and loss control grant program, and they reimbursed us for all of that.
All right. Awesome.
That was a good thing.
I like the price of that.
Streetsweeper is down right now, and we've ordered new parts, or they're being ordered. So I can't tell you when it's gonna be up and running, but that doesn't mean you don't need to move your car. We still have a 72-hour rule.
So are the streets still getting swept, though?
Yes.
They are?
Supposed to be.
Yeah. So if it's broken down, we still need to maintain our streets, right?
The streetsweepers that were hired to do that.
Because I had a complaint about that, yeah.
The what?
I had a complaint about that. The sweeper is down, but are the streets being maintained?
Supposed to be, still being swept. Now, Richard Willoughby is thorough, or if the streetsweeper could do all the streets in one swoop, I can't tell you that the streetsweepers are gonna get to all the streets in one day.
That's great. Any other announcements, council? Written communication? Okay. All right. Oral communication. Anyone in the audience care to address the council for any item that is not currently on our agenda?
Yes, sir.
It's all yours.
Hi. My name's Kathy Swede. I'm sorry. This is the first time I've ever come to a city council meeting. Actually, it's...
Well, welcome Kathy.
Hi. Maybe I'll come more often. The issue that I'm addressing involves a parking citation on Sumner for a handicap parking spot, which was heavily covered...
Kathy, could you talk to the speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry. Which was heavily covered with crabgrass. And we took pictures of this and sent this in. We tried to fight it, and they came back with a denial. It is due tomorrow, and I actually have some great pictures here. I'd like to show how badly it's kept. My boyfriend parked on the crabgrass the night before the ticket was given. And I, for one, thought that he was in the wrong until I saw the obstruction. And I was hoping maybe the city council could look at this and maybe determine that our viewpoints were correct. The gentleman that did his job, he was right. We were in the wrong. But I just think that it could have been avoided. This particular spot, I've learned, in front of Pastor Lopez's house, does not get any manicuring because there is nobody that is paying for it, so it's overgrown all the time. So I was hoping that... It's a $330 fine. I've never caught one that high, and I was hoping that maybe you guys could help make this go away for me, if I could show you my photos. Okay?
Yeah.
Do you want to bring anybody?
Yeah. Denise, right there.
Heck, yeah, bring him around. Hand him to Denise. You can pass him.
This is the first time I've called here, and I don't recall what it is. This is from the street. I have the correct date on camera, because the date is a little confusing, but the gentleman gave it to me. It took the head and shot, not the... So it does... He was correct. He was doing his job correctly. But was there a handicap park? Are we parked there? No, we were parked there, but after we had moved the car, the handicap parked into that spot. This is the same day later on, as we find the one that was later on.
I was just told by someone...
I didn't know what to do. I just didn't know really what to do, because it's, like I say, it's due tomorrow. I didn't know who to go to to address it.
Somebody used a term of grace.
Probably would be this one.
Oh.
I see how you sound.
I sees it. I sees it.
I'm looking at it in the municipal code.
Dennis is here.
Hi, Dennis.
This is the property. This was here. It's sold.
Okay. Well, okay, that's...
You're gonna ask how's it looking?
Imagine it's a appeal process. I imagine it's a appeal. Well, Scott's reviewing the municipal code. Does anyone else in the audience have anything that they'd like to address the council?
You've reviewed.
You reviewed it already?
Well, I have, well, I have some direction. Apparently, when this was... She's already appealed the ticket, and during that appeal, they were... Pictures of the site were not presented. So what we would ask is that... The council does have the role of determining appeals, but what we'd like to do is recommend that she go back to the hearing officer with the photographs of the condition, and have the hearing officer make a determination based upon new evidence. And then, if that's not satisfactory, then she can come appeal before the council.
And how does that affect her ticket being due tomorrow? What's the penalty phase on that ticket if it's not paid?
It will be stayed pending her going back and submitting the additional information. Okay?
I will read it.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Dudley.
It's more Dudley than me.
As we knew. Okay, closed session.
So we're going into one closed session conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to subdivision B of section 549, 56.9. This concerning, concerning the application of Southern California Edison for authority, among other things, to increase its authorized revenues for Catalina Island.
Okay. We shall return. Okay, we've returned from closed session. Would you like to report back, Scott?
Yeah, council has unanimously granted settlement authority to Mr. Bishden to pursue settlement of the rate case.
Thank you. Thanks again, Norris. Consent calendar Denise?
There are three items on the consent calendar this evening, and the actions, item number one, I want to amend it. I have one more set of actions that I forgot to list there, which was for the special council meeting of August 22nd, 2013. So there's five sets of actions. Two regular city council meetings, August 6th and August 20th. Three special city council meetings, which August 7th, which was the city manager interviews. August 22nd was the chamber mixer, and August 28th, which was the first public hearing for fees, the budget study, and a closed session. Item two is expenditures submitted their warrants in the amount of $53,606.34. Item three is warrants in the amount of $777,425.38. Payroll in the amount of $203,134.2. An electric fund transfer for the fuel dock sales tax in the amount of $12,886, for a total expenditure amount of $993,445.40.
Okay, there's three items on our consent calendar, with Denise's alteration of the actions. Any member of the audience care to address or discuss the items on consent? Council?
I make a motion to approve items one, two, and three.
One second. Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
Public hearing.
This is the second of two required public hearings to consider new fees, increase other fees, and charges for service. This hearing was properly posted in the paper, and you've been given the fee schedule.
Okay, this is a public hearing item. We will open the public hearing. Any member of the audience care to address the council to discuss our fees? Come on up.
Annie Marshall, 330 Descanso. The only one that was, of course, having worked for the city, of course, the fees that I would be concerned with are more the recreational-type fees. But the one in particular is the rental of Tremont Hall. I was trying to understand this, the one, two, three, four, and five kind of fee thing, and it seems like it's 65. I guess the 65 is $65. Question is, is that $65 per hour? Per... My first question is, how many hours at a time is that $65 fee imposed? I mean, per day. That's my first question. So if I'm there eight hours, or I'm there one hour, it's $65? So what's the proposed? I was having a hard time reading that one.
Come on up, Jen.
Yeah, come on up, Jen. I just saw it about 5:30 today, so I wasn't really able to absorb it, but...
What page is that on?
And I don't have my glasses.
Twenty.
There, we are proposing a scale where there's five different groups. So you can go to the group section in the very beginning of our fee schedule proposals for rec. So it depends on what you'd want to use it for. But if Annie Marshall wants to have a birthday party at Tremont Hall, you would be group three, resident, private use. So in the proposed Tremont Hall schedule, it would be $100 for the entire day or night for the use of it.
And the, what was the comment about the insurance? The, you would direct them where to get the insurance? Is that kind of the thing now that they would... Is that what I was reading?
That's what happens now, so that would continue to happen.
Okay.
Yeah. So the city has an insurance requirement for renting their property spaces. There's any number of insurance companies out there that do one-day liability insurance policies, and that would continue.
What if I am, if you could just for the sake of audience, I am a private individual who wants to do exercise classes for seniors for an hour?
Then, you can see in the...
Group two?
No, it's not under that section. It's in a different section, which is... In item 14, in our proposed recreation, proposed changes details, the new fees, you'll see an item that says leisure/instructional classes, because we recognize that a class here in Avalon, unlike the mainland where they have a large community of potential people to draw from to attend their class, you know, they may be able to set a set rate. But for us, some people have two people attending, some people have 30 people attending, and that could be, for the exact same class, from week to week, it could change, you know, that much. So as you see on there, it's 30% of their total fees collected, which is what the current, but not actually in the fee schedule, is. So...
Because I was seeing the 65, and the 65, and the somewhere, all of that, and I was just...
Yeah, that's what the existing fee is. So the only fee in the fee schedule currently for Tremont Hall is $65.
And this will go to 30%? Well, private individuals will be 100, like private families. 30% for if I want to do an exercise class?
Right.
And what else do you want to know?
What else do you want to know?
There's a lot in here, so whatever. Okay, but they're basically the two categories. The leisure services and the private parks.
Yeah, so basically, it's broken into classes versus private use, I guess. Clarifications? Good.
Thank you, Annie. Anyone else in the audience care to comment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Council?
Looks by me.
Looks good to me. Is that a motion? That's a motion.
Well, it's okay.
Okay, call for a vote?
All ayes.
General business.
All right. Dennis? We have a list of... You do not have that in there. Did you bring copies, Dennis, for the, that one-page sheet? This, I need to explain that we wanted to, not for you to make any decisions this evening, but just to let you know all the projects, because they're continually evolving, changing priorities. And then, to add to it, today, we received the capital improvement and tenure plan from RBF. It's a draft that we had to submit to the state board on Friday afternoon at 5:00 PM. Did I say Friday or Saturday? On Friday. And then, our system evaluation capacity assurance plan, which they did a capacity flow thing from March to June 4th, and at times, we were already at 75%. So a lot of our sewer stuff has to be redone and enlarged. And so, Dennis, do you want to take the ball?
Was the, the gravity main his first issue?
Dennis, do you want to take a break while we have copies made? I mean, do you need that?
Would you recommend that?
Yes.
Okay, we can do that.
Is that what you've got in front of you, what we, what we're looking at?
Okay.
We were scrambling at...
I understand.
Almost 5 o'clock tonight after we got these reports of changing things.
Okay, give us a second to grab another glass of water.
Give us a second to grab another glass of water.
Yeah.
It was a real rough draft, issues and prioritization of needed repairs. Item number one and two were developed, you have staff reports on those now. They're actually on the agenda. Number six and number seven of tonight's discussions related to number one and two on this prioritization report. The first prioritization issue that I feel is necessary is the gravity main repairs that are necessary down at Pebley Beach. As your memo told you a couple of weeks ago, there's three manholes over there that were completely covered, out two of them. And they could have been covered for 30 years. Did not allow them to breathe, and in so doing, the concrete underneath the lid is gone, disintegrated. So all you have there is a cone of dirt underneath the manhole lid. There's no concrete left. Now, you know, the question is, how long can that situation last? And it's anybody's guess. It's been there a long time now. The fact of the matter is, we just became aware of it. So it really needs to be repaired. What complicates the issue, number one, the gravity main Pebley Beach, is the recent modeling and studies that RBF did would warrant a diameter increase of that pipeline down there. Friday, we thought that we could just repair the pipeline, but in so doing, upon reading RBF's new study, that pipeline should be increased, the diameter should be increased to allow for future development as far as rainy season, a heavy rainy season, which will increase the flow into the sewer. So what you need to consider is the work down there on Pebley Beach Road, the gravity main. The second issue on the prioritization list was the lower terrace road. As you know, that was a public bid, and the staff report sent to you recommended award, pending, of course, funding. So that's another situation that you need to consider. It's hard to prioritize those two issues. Frankly, I'm having a problem with it. Lower terrace roads could be critical. If we have a heavy rain or any earth movement, we could lose a sewer or saltwater line, which would impact the slope. And if the slope moved, we could have an illicit discharge and sewage could enter the bay. We had that situation on Pebley Beach Road as well. So you have the information. There's a lot of questions, I'm sure. I don't know if I have all the answers, but I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Well, I guess the most relevant question currently, knowing that these numbers are rough numbers, but the grand finale is four million bucks. How much of this $4 million is in our proposed budget?
I don't believe I have that answer. I'm afraid to say.
Gina, is any of these 10 listed items currently in our proposed budget?
I believe about $100,000 for the manholes. That's the estimate that we had last week before we presented. So $100,000 of it at this time.
All right. And then Dennis?
Yes.
Item number six on here is the planned retrofit of the variety of fittings that are currently in our saltwater system in the ground?
Yes, and my apologies for that estimate. I just threw a few numbers together. I'm not sure of the magnitude. It could be well less than the 600,000, but this is considering new valves and new ductile iron fittings throughout the saltwater system.
Well, based on what we've spent in valve replacement historically, that 600 may be low.
I reviewed your last go around on the valves, and yeah, it was very expensive. I believe that we might be able to improve on that next go around.
Those cross connections and Ts and those things that exist within the, I guess let's call those the cast iron fittings that are within the system. Do we have any idea how many exist?
David and I have been discussing that. There's less than we originally thought, but we're still getting our heads together and trying to come up with some quantities. As you know, our records, our old plans are not quite that available to us, and we're trying to get into it and develop a scope for that repair.
Wow. Ouch. Okay. So is staff looking to us this evening to try to develop some sort of priority with these 10 items? Or what are you looking?
I just wanted to put it in your radar, and I think that the top two obviously would be this fiscal year if we can. And then the capital improvement 10-year plan, which I'll give you guys a copy of it, and it just has to be down the road. We have to take care of all the stuff, all the things that were detected from our smoke testing.
Gentlemen, not all 10 items need to be dealt with now.
Well, how many of these 10 items are on the radar will become, will land on the radar of the state as they're overseeing our plans to mitigate the baywater quality stuff?
All of them, because this is part of the report that we submitted to the state.
Okay.
We were required to do all these tests and come up with a list of, a to-do list by the state of California, and we've submitted this report to the state, which will, which lists these projects.
Okay. Well, the things, for example, the things that are on here as a result of the smoke testing, is any of that stuff that's on private property?
Yes, some of it is, Mayor, and I haven't determined the magnitude of that yet. And again, I want to remind you, these are rough draft estimates and probably on the higher side. As time allows, we'll be getting into that and try to get you a better quantity of the estimate.
Okay. How much of the, and I'm just throwing out conceptual concepts here. Item number two, the lower terrace bid process that we went through, how much of that $1,303 can we focus on just the area of risk versus the entire road? Can we cut that back some so that we can get?
You had brought that point up before, and it's a very valid argument or point to try to just deal with the sewer line in that issue, in that situation, and move it. We have a clearance issue with other utilities. I believe that's where you were going. We can study it some more, but we also have a saltwater line up there that's susceptible to break. As you know, we were just discussing the ductile iron or cast iron fittings. If that went, it could wash out the sewer line regardless of where we put the sewer. The lower terrace project was on the books a long time ago, and it was decided to try to widen the road and give the residents better access. And, you know, structurally, there is a problem there. The water is draining the wrong way. So we wanted to redesign it and get the water draining the proper way so that dwellings below would not be susceptible to any erosion or runoff. But we can do some more studies there and see about fortifying the sewer somehow or relocating it. We'll have to pothole, get the exact locations and elevations of the existing utilities. We have five different utilities in there. We have gas, water, saltwater, Edison, and sewer. Could be some cable TV in there too, but that's fairly minor.
We also got to remember too, that if something did happen there, not only would we, with the water going into the bay, we're talking about property damage to the structures that are there and the people, which might succeed a lot more than the $4 million we have here
Right.
to do this stuff.
Yes.
So we've just, we've been very lucky, I think, up to this point, and I think we should still go in the right direction still
Yeah.
with that project personally.
There is an action item on this project on the agenda.
Correct.
There is, yeah. It's the next action item. And number two, you'll see, we had the estimate of 1.3. I was on the phone with Edison this afternoon, and that has to go up another 20,000 probably. They have to relocate a couple power poles and some guy wires, and their estimate is between 30 and 40,000 dollars. I had estimated 20,000 last week.
So is that coming out of your pocket then?
Yeah.
Like, and Rich, I'm not negating the relevance of its importance. I'm just trying in my mind to justify, okay, we got sitting in front of us $4 million of rather important infrastructure repairs that need to be done. On this list is not even the mole.
No, no.
I mean, that's
Or the fuel dock.
Or the fuel dock.
Yes.
And I know that, you know, we can sit here and say, well, you know, the state of California redevelopment money. Hey, if all of that redevelopment money was back in the pot here, we still don't have the money to do this stuff. Since the reality is that the mechanism put in play here to help us with infrastructure was flawed to begin with.
Yes. And Mary, you brought up a good point. The mole should be on the list.
Yeah, that's true.
Just so the council knows, one of the things that I have done is I've asked Warren Diven, who is the head of our public financing department, to put together a white paper on forms of structuring and paying for these type of projects. And so he'll probably have that ready for delivery in October. It's just a way of, you know, kind of like a financing 101 on big public works projects. And so I've asked him to provide that presentation to the council.
And since a big, significant part of these 10 items that are on here, let's ignore the mole for a minute, are truly baywater quality related, is there an institution or a firm that we can hire on a commission basis to go out and lobby and find us money?
Yes.
That's obviously going to need to be the place where we start and focus here, is that?
There are, I know that there are several firms that do this, and for those council members that are going through the league, they're all up there.
Yeah.
And they have booths up there, and basically, the way they work is they will write grants and administer grants for a percentage of whatever they get. So it's an eat what you kill type of arrangement.
Subsidiary of BBK?
No. Not yet.
It seems to me that resizing the sewer line going out to the waste treatment plant is probably a serious priority, because if you have to now resize it and make it larger, and according to what I read here, there's a lot of degradation in that line already besides the manholes.
Councilman, I can't tell you enough, the resizing is important.
Oh, no question.
However, the condition of this gravity main just blew me away. It's got longitudinal cracks down the top of it. And Friday, I thought it'd be a simple slip line, you know, that we can get in there and slip line it, but
You can't do that slip line. You got to change the diameter.
I do.
So you got to have new pipes.
And it's apparent that the reality of that is, we're going to have to install a new one adjacent to the one that's currently existing that's going to be running town while the new one's installed.
Well, I investigated that over the weekend. It's, I don't want to get into the means and methods. We can talk about that for a long time. But it could be similar to what we did on Marilla or Whitley, and simply put it in the same place and work backwards while it's alive. We'll have a little bit of bypassing from manhole to manhole, but I think we can save some money that way. At first, my first knee-jerk reaction was to lay it parallel or adjacent to it, but I think the contractor might, and we might benefit from putting it in the same place. Now unfortunately, we've had some sink spots. RBF CCTV revealed a couple areas where the camera went underwater, and we couldn't even get a clear picture, and then it came back up. We have some sink holes in there.
So we could sell that as a ride and collect admission tax?
Yes, you can, Mayor, and you'll probably figure out a way to do that.
Does this primarily serve Pebley Beach Village?
Pardon me?
Does this sewer main primarily serve Pebley Beach Village? This is
No.
No?
This is the gravity main is in between the force main and the Pebley Beach pump station.
Starts at the chain link gate.
So all of them from downtown going into the
Okay.
Catherine, force main pumps to this gravity manhole, and then it's gravity from that chain link gate all the way to Pebley Beach pump station.
Pump station, and then pumps.
Yeah. So, Mr. Morrow, the, we can deal with the increase in diameter, but the condition of that gravity main regardless of the need for increase is very important.
That's where all of it goes.
Yeah.
Right there.
And it's, that's where every gallon goes.
Yes.
And is there, in this study, did they estimate the need for an increase anywhere else in town?
Yes. Unfortunately, there's 150 pages. We started reviewing it late this morning. There's a little bit in the flats that should be increased, only if there's new development. Unfortunately, this gravity main should be increased now, even without new development. And only one segment of it, believe it or not. There's four gravity manholes. RBF is recommending the increase in diameter just between manhole one and two, right where the inflow of force main water hits. They don't feel that we need to increase beyond there. I would recommend, if we're going to replace, that we would spend the extra little bit of money and increase the whole stretch.
And what's the diameter of that pipe right now? What's the diameter?
Existing is 18 inch.
So
RBF is recommending 24.
24?
Yeah, another six inches.
Ta-da.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's a fiberglass reinforced pipe of some kind, a very thin wall. I don't believe the structural capability of this line was proper in the first place. The longitudinal cracks that it's showing lead you to believe that the pressure was not, the pipe was not proper for its application, unfortunately. That's why we're having the issue right now. I can be back for your next issue, or if you'd like to hear more, I'm here.
There you go. Anyone in the audience have any questions for Dennis while he's here, plodding? Thank you, Dennis. Item number six.
Item six was lower terrace road. We briefly
No.
I'm sorry?
Pebley Beach.
Pebley Beach. We, so
Which is pretty much talked about, and we would need a four fifths vote
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
For the manholes.
Gravity main, we kind of covered it.
Yeah.
So if you have any more questions on item six, I'm here.
I have one question. Why would we be asking for informal bids versus formal bids?
Because we can, okay, because an emergency exists because we immediately need to repair these. If we go through a formal bid process, that takes a month, a month and a half. An informal bid process is authorized under the Public Contracts Code, where you get informal bids from various people to do it. They still have to do, they still have to comply with all the laws in terms of actually building it and paying prevailing wages, but allows you, if you vote by four fifths, to not go out and follow the formal procedure, but to do an expedited one to get those bids. You're still going to award it to the lowest bidder. It's just that you don't have to go through all the long procedures that the Public Contracts Code requires. Because the manholes need immediate repairs, we're asking for authorization to do this repair work. We will then be coming back at the next meeting or the meeting after that, after we've been able to analyze the pipeline itself to see what the cost of that is, and perhaps ask for an expedited repair of that. But again, we don't know the scope of that repair work right now, but we do know that the manholes need to be done, and I believe there's an estimate of
For the replacement, I feel that the estimate might be anywhere between 250 and 300,000.
Wow. And so the pipe's not in, the pipe is not in that bid or that estimate?
I'm sorry?
No, 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 no. For the manholes, for the manholes.
Manholes only. There's two different types. There's three manholes that we need to completely remodel, and that'd be about 25,000 to 30,000.
Per?
No, total.
No, total. So the authorization sought today is to make emergency repairs on the manholes for about 25,000 to 30,000. You'd authorize us to enter into a contract after we go get informal bids and have that repair work done immediately. At the next meeting or the meeting after that, once we have a better idea vis-à-vis the main line, we'll come back, and we currently estimate that that may be 250 to 300, but we haven't completed our investigation and analysis of that. So, but before we ask you to spend that money, we'll be coming back again with a report on that. But today is just for the manholes.
Yeah, there was a little confusion on my part. It's kind of the cart before the horse. If we're going to be replacing the pipeline, we would do the piping and the manholes as concurrently. And so, Scott, I apologize for getting on the wrong tangent in the beginning, but we don't need just approval for the manholes right now, because they're going to be done concurrently with, now that we have the new information today, having to increase the diameter, we're going to have to do them concurrently.
So can we, can we request them to go to an informal bid process for the whole scope of piping and manholes? Is question one. Question two
You could do, yes, but then he has to come back with you with the actual, for that amount of the 250, 300, I'd ask to come back with you to award that contract.
Right. The second phase of my question is, there are three manholes that you intend to replace?
Completely. We, yes, they need new manholes.
Are three manholes adequate or overkill based on the span of stretch that we are trying to accommodate?
Just about right, Mayor. They're about 320 feet apart, and it's just about right. There's 1,000 feet there. So I think we're just right. We don't need to add any. The fourth manhole is right before Pebley Beach. It's in good shape because it's been maintained. The lid has been exposed and it's breathed. It's in good shape. We're just going to spray epoxy in it. It's in good shape. The other three need to be replaced.
Okay. And the three that have been covered for some extended period of time, Lord only knows how long that those have been that way, are they on a map anywhere that you're aware of?
Yes.
Okay.
So one of them had asphalt over it, wasn't just dirt.
Yeah, one of them had
And I would recommend a field trip, seriously. To see it is to really understand it.
I've seen where they've been exposed, and I took a peek at how busted up and dilapidated they are, and it kind of shocks me a little bit, and what
It's crazy.
What is brewing, the question is, is that, you know, we had a sewer purveyor in our community for, how long was United here?
Long time.
Long time.
Too long.
How much of this lack of maintenance and care really should be burdened by their inability to perform? I mean, this is, this is a big number, you know, it's
It's unbelievable, frankly. A whole stretch of pipeline there that hasn't been maintained this long is just unbelievable.
It'd be nice.
Well, that pipeline was replaced in the 80s, the whole force main?
The force, the force main, I believe early 90s, Pastor and I were doing some historical search.
Yeah, but the gravity main was replaced too.
But the gravity main
It's plastic.
Anybody's guess.
Yep.
I don't know. We can't find old plans.
Well, if it's made of something other than
Clay.
Clay or whatever. We don't have any records that indicate when that was last serviced or dealt with.
No, but that doesn't mean that they're not here. I've looked back there, just, needs to be a little more organized, and perhaps we'll find them. But I, all I have is a little sample of the type of pipe, and it's, it's a very thin wall pipe, and it's no surprise to me that it's failed.
David, do you have any records out at
Yeah, I can't remember what they are. I think, I would say 74.
74?
For the gravity main?
Yeah, they don't put me on that one. I got plenty of them.
So all this is on United Water, a lot of this was.
So all this is on United Water, a lot of this was. This, not maintenance, right? Preventive maintenance, not from United Water? I wonder if there's anything in their contract with the city at the time for their insurance or something? Maybe we could recoup some money from them some way if we, to prove that they were negligent in some of the things they did with the city.
I'd have to look at our agreement with United Water, our separation agreement for that. Usually, though, if it's a pipeline is under, if it's a sewer pipeline, there's a certain life expectancy of, of the pipeline, and, you know, we just have to, have to look at the pipeline, what the life expectancy is. Once a pipeline is in the ground, the maintenance obligations are less than obviously if you can easily access it. And we also entered into an agreement with United Water when we had a separation where we got some considerations. So we'd have to look at that, to see if that covers this or leaves us options. But we can look at that and come back to you.
That'd be great.
Well, if we could also look at, you know, Dennis made the comment that the pipe is maybe the inappropriate pipe that was put in the ground, and I don't know what, under what contract that was done in the seventies or whatever it was.
If it's past 10 years, there's nothing we can do.
TSO, okay.
It's, statute of limitations for construction is 10 years.
Okay.
Bummer. Okay, anyone in the audience care to comment on this item?
Thank you. Thanks, Dennis.
Any motion from council or further discussion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion. That's, gotta do that one.
For the informal bidding?
Yeah, as soon as we can, it's emergency repair.
And let's, so informal bid process for not just the manholes, but the manholes and piping?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
We get a good, good idea what's going on, so we can make.
We've got a motion.
Decision has got to be made to do it. So we just got to figure out how little it's going to cost.
Gina needs to find some money.
Yeah.
Gina's going to be busy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
Okay, number seven, Dennis.
Now we have Lower Terrace Road, right? I don't have the agenda with me, sorry. Okay, we were talking about Lower Terrace Road earlier. The 1.3 is a lot, I agree. There is a contingency in there. If you, you'll see on the staff report, there's a breakdown. I have about 150 contingency in there for unforeseen situations. We've got to remember we're drilling and, and pouring caissons. And that's pretty risky work. If in fact we don't hit the bedrock like we want, or that the geologist thinks we will, we might have to pay the contractor to go extra depths. So that's why I, I would recommend the contingency of the 150 in there. Mr. Mayor, you have mentioned a couple times about relocating the sewage line or other lines, and we just have to do some more studies in there. Could be possible to do. But you have to know we're not going to have the roadway improved or the, or fix the slope to prevent any runoff in the future. We could certainly probably add that. The majority of this 1.3 is for the installation of the caissons and widening the road. So unfortunately, you have to make a decision on this one. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or making statements about Lower Terrace Road?
Hey. There is, there is the, the issue that for the funding of this, what we had contemplated was using the money, the golden ticket money from the redevelopment agency. We cannot use that money until January 1st. So if the council were inclined to accept this bid for this project, what we would recommend is that the council give us authorization to negotiate with the low bidder, to have them start work next year so that we can use the 600,000 or 700,000 from redevelopment money for this, keeping this price. Or if need be, because we're extending it out for a cost of living increase, if it's, if, even if it's a 3% cost of living increase, if we went until the beginning of next year, it would be 10, 15,000. Another consideration that I have, just from my work in La Cañada, we did about a $50 million sewer replacement project. And we did part of that during the winter. And what happened is, we had rains, and it became difficult to do the compaction. And so we did that project 10 years ago, and we're still running into problems with the, you can tell even though we've sorted it over and we've resurfaced the roads where the lines were, you've got ruts because it sinks. So it's better to do a project like this, not in the winter, but in the dry season. The other consideration I was concerned about today was if you do it during the winter and you open up that trench, and it rains, you've got, no matter what protection you can have against cars going over it, if you don't hermetically seal that trench, water's going to get in. And with, with our issues right now with this trench and our concern, we'd be concerned if we had a big rainstorm and the trench is open, that, that might cause a problem. So I think after looking at this and discussing this with staff today, if the council wants to go forward with this project, we'd ask that you award it to Dublin Group, allow us to negotiate an extension of time that they can do it, perhaps start in the spring after the rainy season. That would also allow the council time to find the money for this project. Because as said earlier, I don't believe this, this project is in the budget, other than the desire to use the redevelopment money. We can't touch that money until it's on the golden ticket, until it's spent through the Department of Finance.
On the other hand, if we want to break the drought, we start working in January.
This is true.
Yeah, we need to move forward.
So we're 700,000 short.
We were thinking maybe the Metropole property sale. Combining the two with the golden ticket money.
Isn't that already in the budget as revenue?
You can't count that twice. You could, but wouldn't be good.
We go ahead and make a motion.
But you didn't have that money in the budget yet, did you?
Yeah, it's in there.
Yes, it was.
I'm not trying to beat a dead horse. If we were to extract the leveling of the road from this bid, what do you think it would cost us to secure the saltwater line, secure the sewer line, and get the road back open? To full access, current width, with the exception of where it has to be widened to secure the pipelines? Would it dramatically change that million dollar figure?
Dramatically. I can't give you an estimate. A little bit of studies, perhaps a pothole or two to verify, a couple elevations. I could have you that info in two weeks.
Yeah. What I'm going to suggest is regardless of what the council direction is, we have the ROPS coming up. And if you want to preserve the ability to use your redevelopment funds for this project, that when you have the ROPS towards the end of September, you put this project on those ROPS so that you can spend that redevelopment money for it. And so you could do this reconfiguration, I just need to, I need to have a name for that.
Let me ask a question in another way, Scott, and this is more a legal question for you. I understand the passion and the desire to get this, get this fixed, get it done, get it fixed quickly, get it rolling. I understand your concept of, let's try to do this in the dry season. I understand the golden ticket aspect of all of this. When we change the scope of work dramatically from where this number sits today, and we then go back to the Devon Group and ask them two things. One, is it going to cost us to postpone this, this work project any more than it currently is? And would they be willing to modify their, their bid based on scope and parameter of work? Does it make us rebid this project?
I think usually the standard thing is if you know you're going to be changing a project, and the change is going to be more than 25%, it's been my custom in practice to recommend that you rebid it.
In your professional opinion, then, Dennis, would this change the scope of work by more than 25%?
Yes. I.
I'm going to get on my soapbox. We have been promising the residents of Lower Terrace Road that we would fix the road. The road is crap, and it needs to be fixed. Bottom line. We have to go find the money, the road needs to be fixed.
It's been way too long.
I agree with Michael.
I think we all want to fix it, it's whether, to what degree does it get fixed? Does it turn into 405, or does it turn into Lower Terrace?
I would like to see it get fixed, disfixed.
I think that's what Bobby was saying, is what would it take just to fix it? Not to improve it, just to fix it.
I think we owed to them to fix it, right? We've been wait, kicking, like you said, we've been beating this horse, dead horse for a long time. And I want to see us go forward with this project, personally.
The, if I might add, the bids that we received, you'll, you'll notice, I believe on the staff report, there are far and wide Boulder Construction's been working on the island, and I think we're fortunate to have, have him look at this and bid it. He came in a little under my estimate. The other guys are sky high. I, I don't know about a rebid, that's entirely up to you and what you decide. But we're pretty comfortable with the lower bidder. He's been vetted, and his recommendations are sound, for what it's worth.
Would Boulder be a possible company to do the sewer line out to a waste treatment plant?
I'm not sure, Ralph, if their forte is pipeline or not. I can certainly look into that. I had it in mind to solicit local contractors for that emergency repair, as well as contractors on the mainland.
Thanks. Scott, now, I want to get it straight. We really can't start that project until January to get the money. We can't start it earlier and then still get that money that hasn't been made available to us yet.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Let me, it's, right now, it's a 1.3 million dollar project. Of the 1.3, about 700,000 is going to come from the money that is from the former redevelopment agency. You cannot spend that portion of the money, because it's not on the current ROPS, until January 1st. You could spend other money earlier on the project.
That's my question.
Before, yes. Yes, so in other words, it's one, you could spend 600,000 before, one, if you identify where you're going to get that money from. And two, the only risk there is that because we're going to put this on the ROPS, and it has to be approved by the state of California, there's a slight risk, because we have the golden ticket, so it should be okay. But there's a slight risk that when the Department of Finance looks at this, they would turn it down. And therefore, you'd have let a contract, you'd start, you'd have started work on it, and you wouldn't be able to complete it unless you went through an appeal with the Department of Finance. It's a small chance, probably not going to happen. So if you wanted to go forward with this project, you know, as is right now, it's a matter of going forward, finding the money to make up for the difference, and then you give direction to staff when you want to do it. Do you want to start right away, take a risk? Do you want to wait till January or until the Department of Finance has completed its review of your ROPS? Do you want to wait until after the rainy season to do this project? Or a slightly modified project? Again, you, you have options. You just need to tell us what you want to do, and we'll make it happen.
I want to agree with your two sentiments, that we've been talking about this and dealing with it way too long. On that notion, however, it sounds to me, based on staff's recommendation, we're not going to, we don't intend to start this project until after this, hopefully rainy season. Does that buy us time, then, in staff's professional opinion, that we could rebid this with some modifications to the scope of work to get the road back to as good or better condition that it's been in, secure the sewer line so that it's not putting our harbor at risk, and securing the saltwater line, and allowing us to commence construction no later than what's currently anticipated?
Can't answer that right now for you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have to check with the engineers. As you know, this project was on the books for a while, and we just kind of inherited it. So I don't know, I haven't really studied the past history or exactly where a lot of these existing utilities are. I know the road is very narrow because of erosion that's developed. So we're not going to be able to widen the roadway without any new caissons or, or anything to that effect. I guess I'd have to try to define what you mean by getting it, getting it back in shape, or getting the utilities back in shape. I believe what you're talking about is securing the sewer line or, and/or the saltwater line so that in case of any further erosion, they won't deteriorate or fail.
Right.
Just going to have to get into it a little bit more and check it out, sorry to say.
Can we hold this over for the next meeting?
Can, can you come back in two weeks with an answer?
Yes. That's all the time we would have, but I'd have to refer to council. The fastest, I believe it was a 60-day award on the project, or was it 90, Scott? I've forgotten now, I think it was 60. The contractor, in his specifications, has to be notified within 60 days after bid. The bid was July 31st. So I think we have until the end of September to award the project legally.
Yeah, we, we hold their, yeah. The bid bond, which they've agreed to enter into a contract that they bid for, it's for 90 day, for 60 days. So assuming it's July. Then that gives us to the end of September.
So you can consider that, I can do some more investigations, or however you decide to vote tonight. We'll go with it.
Discussion, motions?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and start, and go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and grant the bridge to the lowest bidder, Boulder, tonight. I think we've been kicking this horse too long, I think we need to get direction. We do what Scott says, we start it after January, after the rainy season. I think we need to start that now.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Call for a vote, please?
Um, discussion?
Oh, discussion.
I, I just, I feel important to remind the council that we're looking at a 2.7 million dollar deficit in the budget today. We just increased it.
Yeah.
And I just, I think, I think we need to relook at the scope of the project. If we can get it down to 600,000, we can pay forward redevelopment money, it's a done deal, we're not affecting the budget any. But I think it's irresponsible for us to spend, dig this that deep of a hole, I mean, we're already in a deep hole.
I, I have to argue on the, on that point, in that we took the money we were going to use for that road.
And sent it.
To, to make improvements to Whitley and Murilla when they did the.
The road.
The sewer repairs. So those roads got fixed, those roads are much better. And Lower Terrace sits there falling apart.
I'm thinking, give Dennis a couple of weeks to look at the scope. And let us come back and see if, see if it's fixable. and let us come back and see if it's fixable. I agree that we need to fix it, but I don't think it's responsible for us to go that much further in the hole, right now.
The problem is we don't have the answers in front of us right now.
Yeah, two weeks.
I mean, if we're gonna save, you know, if we're gonna save pocket change in modifying the bid process, then it's not worth going through. But if it's a significant amount of money.
We're gonna get more data, right?
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call for a vote, please.
Wow.
Three eyes, Morrow, Ponce, Hernandez. And two noes, Mayor Kennedy and Councilmember Olson.
So that means we're awarding the contract to Devlin Group for 1.3.
Did you vote to fix it, Ralph?
Yeah, this was a vote on awarding the contract.
Correct.
And then, and then, we'll be, wait a minute, I'm sorry. We should wait for his input in two weeks.
We want to move reconsider.
To get more information. But it looks like this is a contracting company we need. And if we agree to use them, then it's up, staff can adjust the schedule or at least discuss with them if we have to put them off for a little while. And if they change their mind, then we can come back to the council and I can change my vote.
I think you just voted to award the contract as it was bid. So I think if you want to get input from Dennis, we need to move to reconsider, see what he says in two weeks and then take an action then.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, then make a motion to reconsider.
Well, well, wait a minute. He can bring that information back. And if the information is good, then I can do a reconsider. No, I gotta do a reconsideration before, huh?
Yeah. We just awarded the contract.
Okay, then I apologize. I hit the wrong button. I will, I will vote no.
The correct motion is to move to reconsider.
I will move to reconsider.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we call for a vote on reconsideration?
Yes, call a vote for reconsideration.
Call a vote for reconsideration.
Three eyes, Kennedy, Morrow, Olson. Two noes, Ponce, Hernandez.
Okay, so now is there a motion to replace? Is there, okay, so now it goes back to the original motion. Which is the motion by Councilmember Hernandez, seconded by Councilmember Ponce to award this contract to Devlin Group with a direction for the staff to negotiate an extension of time with the Devlin Group so that the current scope of the work can be done next year after the redevelopment funds are secured.
Call for a vote, please.
Three eyes, Morrow, Ponce, Hernandez. Two noes, Kennedy, Olson.
Ralph, just do it again.
I'm sorry. I meant no, okay, I hit the wrong button.
Okay, so we moved to
Let's do a motion for reconsideration again because the votes were voted.
Move to reconsider, Ralph.
I don't really think this matters. Did you vote?
No, he needs to move to reconsider.
I gotta move to reconsider again because I hit the wrong
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Three eyes, Kennedy, Morrow, Olson. Two noes, Ponce, Hernandez.
Okay, now the motion as traditionally set forth by Mr. Hernandez, Councilmember Hernandez, seconded by Councilmember Ponce.
Call for a vote, please.
Two eyes, Ponce, Hernandez. Three noes, Kennedy, Morrow, Olson.
There's the direction from council to bring this back in two weeks.
I would like to make a motion that we ask Dennis to investigate in short order whether or not there's a substantial savings by taking some of the scope of the work out of this project. And if he feels that there is a change that would impact more than 25% in the overall bid cost, that we instruct him to rebid that project based on this motion so that we save that time.
I'll second.
Any other comments?
I did.
Okay, call for a vote, please.
Three eyes, Kennedy, Morrow, Olson. Two noes, Ponce, Hernandez.
Close session. Okay, close session.
Okay, we have three closed, four closed session items. First one is conference with real property negotiators. Property is a race course for the Catalina Grand Prix 2013, including the Our Trail. Negotiating party is Santa Catalina Island Company on one side and Denise Ratty and city attorney on the other, under negotiation. Price in terms of payments. Because this is negotiation with the island company, the, well, to the extent that we're talking about the island company negotiation, those councilmembers that still have conflicts with the island company would not be participating in that portion of it. We also have public employee appointment, city manager, public employee appointment, chief administrative officer, and conference with labor negotiators between the council, myself, and the unrepresented employees, city manager and chief administrative officer. I do anticipate reportable action.
Okay, we've returned from closed session. Would you like to report back, Scott?
Yes, in closed session, the city council took two unanimous actions. On public employee appointment for city manager, the city council has unanimously appointed Ben Harvey as city manager. On public employee appointment, chief administrative officer, the city has unanimously appointed Denise Ratty as a chief administrative officer.
For Denise. Okay, thank you, Scott. Anything to report, Denise?
Wait, wait. I need to vote on that. Now we go to general business.
General business. Eight, nine.
Oh, right, item number eight.
Item number eight is approval of a contract with the new city manager. The city council gave, we conducted a survey. We have, I've completed negotiations with Mr. Harvey on compensation for city manager as well as benefits. I will have you know that Mr. Harvey is coming in on the same level as a brand-new hire in terms of vacation accrual. All of the benefits, he's starting as a first-time hire. We did give him two weeks vacation in the books, but that was it. And so the contract I've distributed to the council. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone care to entertain a motion? I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
All eyes.
And then on item number nine, this is the contract for the chief administrative officer. Because the description of that job relates to functions that the former chief administrative officer, Charlie Wagner, was to handle, that needs some modification. I've spoken with both Denise Ratty and Ben Harvey about that and what we contemplate is, is that we hold this contract over until Denise and Ben can determine the actual responsibilities of the chief administrative officer. And then we'll be coming back to the council for approval of not only the job description of the chief administrative officer, but the actual contract for Ms. Ratty.
Dividing up the kingdom.
Absolutely.
Any discussion on this item?
So
Anyone care to entertain a motion?
Well, there would be no motion on this one because we're holding it over for probably until, well, the first or second meeting in October. Mr. Harvey will start at the next council meeting, it'll be his first day.
We should still forget it's Monday the 16th.
It's Monday the 16th.
It's Monday. Monday the 16th.
Because we're going to Sacramento.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I'll put that in my book.
Yeah, I was wondering how we were gonna do that one.
Okay.
Was that my anniversary? Oh, my God.
Is that your anniversary?
The mic is on.
Do you have anything to report, Denise? Scott?
No.
Council?
No, Denise, we're gonna try to get ahold of Ron Height possibly for the next meeting.
You've got it.
Atta girl.
I got one thing there, boss.
Okay.
It's been brought to, I think, our attention that Catalina Freight Line is requesting paperwork from people wanting to ship cars back to the mainland. They want the receipt of when they paid for the freight coming this way. And since the round trip has always been in the tariff, I'd like to see staff write a letter to the PUC asking for a clarification of this because if you brought a car over here 15 years ago, I doubt very seriously you'll find the receipt that you paid to bring it over. We don't want to encourage people to leave cars here. When a car wears out like that, we want it to go home, someplace other than here.
So what am I asking the CPUC?
To seek for their opinion as to Catalina Freight Line now requesting proof of payment for return trips on cars, no matter when the car came over. Because it's been in the tariff.
I do have something.
You know something?
No, I do have something. Can we talk to the island company about doing something with the gate at Mount Ada? Just trying to come out of the gate from the stop sign that we never had before going out? We almost got hit three times, boom, 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 nobody stopping at the stop sign. And then constantly, I don't know if the rental golf carts know that that road is now one-way again. But you've got tons of golf carts going the wrong way, rental golf carts going the wrong way. Since it's island company property, they need to go out there and stripe it, mark it, whatever. The little signs they've got aren't doing a whole lot. But the big one is, I pulled out, golf cart ran right through, I slammed on the brakes, started to go again, another golf cart came, just you just, they need to make that more legible that that is a stop.
I think maybe we ought to make it I think we maybe ought to make it a red light area. Be the only one in Avalon.
Maybe with parking meters along the way.
Do you have anything, Rich?
I did.
I'm good.
Where are we with a letter to the county asking them to sit down with us to renegotiate the paramedic contract?
I wouldn't use renegotiate, I'd use talk about.
It's on the burner, that's about all best I can tell you. We're just, I'd like to finish up. The budget should be coming back at the 16th meeting. And then there's a list of things we need to tackle.
Okay, I'm just trying in my mind to come up with, you know, there's a gazillion cuts we need to make or some ideas and concepts we need to kind of throw out there. And so focusing on the big-ticket items is a place to start. Okay.
Great, that's true, Bob. We want to have that done before you try to adopt this budget. That's already three months behind.
Right, 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 no, I know that. We're gonna have to approve a budget and then we're gonna have to work like dickens to get through it. Okay, anything else? All right, we're adjourned.